If you're ready, I'll call us meeting the board. And we have an approval of the agenda. Do we have approval of the minutes? Minutes for July 2nd. Twenty-five. And also, June 19th. June 27th, twenty-five.
I've got a question about the 19th, Amanda. Where we were discussing the budget and stuff. I believe the Shriners' donation was supposed to be in that also.
It was.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was for a thousand dollars.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah. So, I'm gonna make a motion that we amend June the 19th meeting minutes to add, the Shriners' children's home donation. And under the budget discussion. And then, if you agree with that, then I'll make a motion to pass it as amended.
I'll see. This time, I'll open up the floor to public comment.
We gonna do the rest of these?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got to reset.
Make a motion to approve June the 27th. The July the 2nd meeting minutes. On the rules and procedures of creating the agenda. I think it's also in our policy that we get the agenda sent out and posted and everything, forty-eight hours before the meeting. So, I would like for that to be done. Forty-eight hours before.
I'd like to have a notice of the meetings you can have behind my back, also.
I'm just wanting to make sure that we get the agenda before we ever come to the meeting. That's all. Make a motion to approve the meeting for July the 6th.
There've been several meetings behind my back. I think Molly was hired. Was done an open meeting.
When was that?
The date, but we sit right here in an open meeting and discussed it, bringing her back.
When was she hired originally? Can't answer that, huh?
I don't remember the exact date, but everything went down in open meetings, I mean...
It was with, uh...
We made, uh-huh, we made the motion to approve the Golden... Golden Leaf. To bring that on to us.
Yeah, but you didn't...
As an intern.
You didn't mention who you were gonna hire.
We don't do that. They, the... Golden Leaf allows the people to put in for it, and then they kind of choose what they think would be best fit for it, based on their past schooling and all that stuff. Do we have any public comment?
I hadn't opened up the floor to public comment yet, but I will at this time. We have a motion to close public comment. Make a motion to close public comment.
Second.
So, why wasn't I given a notice of the meeting? You and Kim's now on Saturday morning, hard to manage employees. You love giving them a notice. I never received one. Sean, I'll tell you what, if you was interested in the last four years, if you been wise two weeks, we've got a lot to hold up there. Now, I don't know how else to put it, I appreciate your opinion, but I don't think this is the time or the place for it. When is the time of the place? You can't go to an open meeting. Maybe a private meeting or something like that, or if you want this to get ugly, it'll get ugly. What do you make it ugly? I mean, you keep throwing this stuff out here. Now, there ain't been no private meetings, ain't been nobody pick on you, ain't been nobody done nothing. And you keep wanting to come up and attack people. Nobody attacking you, can you? But, you know, all I can say is we'll agree to disagree on it, but, like I say, if you've been more involved through the whole term than... I've been involved, had to do the finance officer job for months because you wouldn't hire anybody. Oh, Lord, Sean. It was right there through the whole hiring process with us. And you wouldn't hire anybody.
We hired who you wanted, it's just we hired Michael Richardson.
We hired Ralph Richardson, Ralph, you're right, my bad.
We did.
After it terminates on in July of '22. Yeah, at your request. No, it wasn't in my request. You done with my house and request. I did not, that's a lie, Ken. Oh, it ain't? No, it is a lie. Yeah, I think we might get back on track. That is completely false, what you just said. No, it ain't? Yes, it is. Oh, it ain't? No, I did not in her term, actually, she done an outstanding job. All right. Anyway, I've got some questions here. Linda, what formula are you using to calculate benefits?
What do you mean benefits?
Like sick time?
It's what's in the policy. Are you talking about...
Like I said, you've got four hundred and forty-six hours sick time altogether.
Me? I would have to go and look and pull it. I've not double-checked them. It's Abraham, any, whatever's in the personnel policy.
Yeah, it's a maximum of ninety-six hours per year.
I haven't done the swapping them over from sick to the, uh, what is it, rolls into another vacation, now the sick rolls into...
Sick, sick, no.
No, I've not done, oh, I haven't had time.
I'm just asking how you got...
That's on nobody.
You've got four hundred and forty-six hours when the maximum's ninety-six hours per year.
Because, Sean, there's one of me, and we have been understaffed. That's why we called, or they hired Molly back. I can't, it's hard to do, you've said it yourself, one person to do both jobs. I haven't had time to roll no ones. So, it's not just mine, it's every employee.
I'll just know how you got that.
I haven't calculated that, the software has done that, I haven't calculated any of it.
All right, you have anything that they don't know?
Yeah, actually, I do. So, as of right now, all of the accounts that was messed up last month because of the meter swap-out, where people got really high water bills, all of those was adjusted and corrected prior to the bill on this month. So, that took a long time, a really long time. That's why Molly was a little late getting the water bills out. Also, I had a question about the cutoff limits, like if you guys are wanting to enforce that again now, and how far do they need to be behind before it's enforced, if that's what you want?
Is it, is it correct now, Chad?
I think so, yeah.
Then it should just go for whatever the policy has already been set.
For the most part, now, the meters that wasn't swapped out, that say was swapped out in between last month and this month, then they're coming in, but they're not nowhere near like it was. They're just here and there, the water bills, excessive. And me and Molly's been making the corrections on it.
I think the board ought to give people a break that's receiving this excessive bills on their late fees and cutoffs.
Have you, have you, uh, have you took into account everything that's happened with the water and been able to...
Yeah, and the old meter read, the easiest way to do it would be, we figured, was to take the old meter read, whatever it was showing up, take that off and only charge for the new. And as far as the late fees go, if their account's been messed up, we have taken the late fees off.
So, you have adjusted and took the late fees off? Well, I think you've done a good job, then.
It's been very time-consuming, but we done it. I think it'll look even better every month as...
Have you guys done away with that own, that own cloud, iCloud payment thing?
It's still, uh...
What about Envoy's Cloud?
Envoy's Cloud, yes, thank you.
People are still using it.
That was one of y'all's problems too, though.
It was. That was a big problem, I think. For the most part, we've gotten that straightened out, haven't we?
Okay.
I know several people's been concerned.
Yes, they have.
The highest one I've seen's been forty-six thousand dollars.
Did you adjust that one?
Oh, yeah, every one of them.
Yeah.
So, everyone on the streets, huh?
Every one of them that was affected, yes. Now, if there was one that went out this month, they just need to bring it in, like, and as soon as we see it, then me or Molly, either one of us is adjusting it. And there's been a few, but not nowhere like it was. It's went way smoother this.
All right. Next up, Sandy's got four.
I'm Marie DeRanger. I'm here for, try to get water rights, for, you know, and get fixed as much like everybody else does. So, I brought my mom, Marilyn Calvin, to explain it more to you.
Spencer Calvin was my, was my husband. And he, he asked why. And George Calvin was his dad. And George, in, in the town of Robbinsville, that years ago, made a deal that, that he would get fifty cents a month, water, and, and his siblings. And Spencer only had one, and that's Sandy. And the papers supposedly got burnt, uh, flooded out in the basement when, uh, uh, that Rogers was mayor. And I know, and that corner is still on where the water is. And I think that she should have fifty cents a month because of all the re, uh, the rest of the, of the siblings that had it.
Another thing, too. I did live in my grandma's trailer here, I guess, it's been a long time, though. That's when they was still getting the water, and I was getting it too at that time.
So, you'd received that before?
Yeah.
But she's lived in Georgia.
For twelve years.
For twelve years. And she's just come back.
Basically, it's honored for the rest of the family except for Sandy. And she's had it in the past.
And, and that, that's still on the corner. The, the water is, George, Spencer's dad, and, uh, the town of Robbinsville made a deal that they would get fifty cents a, a month. And she's not getting it.
The rest of the family's getting it, but she's gone.
Yeah, that's the way it is.
The only thing I can tell you is that what I saw in the minutes that Sean showed me from back years ago, it said that George and all of his heirs were entitled to this. Heirs in North Carolina is defined as the people who inherited from you, not as your descendants. So, that's all I can tell you. The way, the, the minutes are not drafted to reflect that descendants would get it. The minutes were drafted to say heirs. Again, heirs are just who the, who it directly, who you directly pass to in your will or in your estate, and it stops with heirs right there. That stops, it doesn't go on down to the heir's children or the heir's grandchildren. If y'all choose to do it, that's to you, but, I mean, if you read the minutes, that's how the minutes are written. That's the legal, I mean, I'll tell you about the legal part of the minutes. And again, the document that shows that, nobody can produce. It should have been recorded in the register of deeds when the easement was done to let them have that, put that on that property, there should have been an easement drawn, and that easement should record that this is our agreement. As we grant this easement to you, this is what we get, and that should be recorded in the register of deeds. Whether it is or not, I can't tell you, but that's how you, I mean, that's where the document should be, not in the basement of anything the town owns, but in the register of deeds office.
It's been years ago.
But the register of deeds office was being here since eighteen seventy-two. So, I mean, their records would still be intact. It should have been recorded there, I don't think it was, nobody could, seems to have been able to find it there. That's where it should be, if not, then it's just whatever y'all... Whatever y'all choose to do.
And your honor, descendants, other descendants, it's not part of honoring them and not saying you.
I'm gonna make a motion that we honor Sandy.
I'll see.
Is your, like, what, the third?
See, there was just five, five other heirs that owns that, uh, manor code. And when that came down, and it took the, the corner, the water pond, and it, and it's still there.
And she was getting it prior to, kind of, I guess that she was already receiving it prior to, so...
Yeah, but that's been a while.
Was it down the move?
Yeah.
I lived in Georgia.
Next up, we got the speed bumps. I've had some citizens on, lives on Cody Street, ask me if I was going in front of board, if the town would remove those speed bumps off of Cody Street.
They don't come down for, on Cody Street, huh?
They sure do.
I thought, I thought they wanted them, why do they not want them now? Who, who...
Several residents did, more of them.
How many speed bumps is on Cody Street?
Three.
Yeah, two, three.
Maybe we can take one off, but I feel like that it's a street that is heavily traffic with, uh, with the baseball field or softball field being down there, I think we probably need to keep at least something to kind of keep them slowed down.
Maybe space them out a little more, because they're all free.
Maybe put two, take one up, and space the other two out.
Maybe it's like a completely removed.
They may need to come to a meeting.
And if we do remove them, or take one up and move it somewhere else, we'll overfire other hardware, because you can't reuse what's there, it, it ruins it. Once you start drilling it into the asphalt. That's why the other two aren't put back up yet. Three, ever needed was.
So, the board wants to leave them?
Can take up one. I feel like it's for the safety of the kids and all, everything going down that street.
And that one was fought?
Well, they wanted them to begin with, so it was evidently a safety hazard then, so it still has to continue to be a safety hazard. And if they want to come to us at the next board meeting and discuss the other two, we'd be happy to talk to them. Make a motion, we take up one of the speed bumps on Cody Street?
And maybe put it back in one of the spots that they took it up earlier.
At least gotta have hardware, so, yeah.
The, the problem with those that were privately owned, I mean, somebody else bought those. Which one? The ones on Cody Street.
That's what I was saying, I didn't remember the town putting them back there.
The town put them up, but someone else purchased them.
Maintenance did put them up, I, I'm, I think either out, I think somebody did purchase those.
But we might as well table that one that bought them.
So, if we were to remove one, would it be, need to be the middle one? I mean, because...
Do you want to table it until these people can come in and we can talk about it, yeah, you're right.
Certainly, there's one resident that can't drive through that because of them, I've been able to drive them over them in years.
Can I amend my motion, Vicky?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Whatever, whatever.
Well, I make a motion to table that until we can investigate that with whoever bought the speed bumps and find out who the one person is that can't get out of Cody Street or get on Cody Street. See if we can maybe make it to where it's feasible for that person to...
She can get on Cody Street, she can't go that direction, she has to go in a different direction.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll see. Most buyers, issue resolved, I think.
Or is that not?
I don't have the head word, I don't have the updates on it yet, so, just table it to the next meeting. Okay, new business, Chris wanted on the agenda about...
He was saying he knew Watsons, so, he went and got another Watson. In, in the policy, typically, I get a dollar raise, and I get a new Watsons. So, that's what Chris is...
Make a motion, this policy, get ready, we get them.
I'll save it.
What policy was you referring to?
Well, it's, for whatever, if I have to pull out, it's in there, though, whenever they take, and you get new certifications or whatever he did. Do you remember the one he...
Yes, they, they approved the minutes a long time ago. You know, for every certification, the town would give a dollar increase.
Because we done one for him not too long ago, right? Because he's went to these classes.
Yeah, he's got two so far.
Next up is the town website. Apparently, last summer, someone entered into a contract with a different company, having a website. It's been over a year now, it's, it still not went live.
Somebody, I remember that. It was revised. I plan to try to get that done.
Before the town's paying three thousand dollars and it's not live yet.
No. Make a motion to amend until we can see what's going on and see how we can go about getting the issue corrected.
You want to stay with that company, or...
I don't know what company it is, I don't know, where's the contract? Is it to, can we... That's why I'd like to make a motion until we get to see the website contract and all the issues to the next month.
Okay, so you're wanting to look at the contract first and...
See what they've got, maybe get in touch with them, see if they can, how long it's gonna be till they get done, what they need to do. If they breached the contract, then we don't need to keep them. I mean, I would have looked at that myself.
When was this decided to go with this company?
It was in a meeting. We were in a meeting, and we were needing to update our website because, um, it had to do with our, water updates and all that, and, and, and it was after Abraham, he, he done away with the website and stuff, so we were having to build a new one. Yeah.
Shows contact information and everything, breached department as well.
All right. Next up, Crystal couldn't be here tonight, but she is requesting her water meter be moved to her residence, so she can have her drive, uh, she gonna pay for driveway.
So, we have moved it several times, we moved it from the tank down to the bottom of another person's driveway, and then from their driveway down to when Miss Stevens lived there, and then we moved it from the flower bed into the road with a crush-proof box, so I mean, we've moved it three times. And we've moved it, I would say, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen hundred feet from where it's, was that, again, which I don't, I don't care to move it again, we have moved that several times to get it to that property.
Is it an extra cost?
Oh, yeah, every time, every time we have to cut the line and have, you know, everybody to move it and everything. We say, we moved it several times to get it there, and we paid for a crush-proof box and lid to be roadworthy, traffic rated. But I do not care to move it again. But that's completely up to you guys.
Yeah.
Where the four hill tank is. Uh, where Jay Jay lives, um, it's below his house.
And it needs to be moved so she can pave her driveway. She can pave all of the meter.
Blinding meters and sidewalks and.
So that's the purpose of the traffic rated box. It's like you can drive over it with. Traffic. Doesn't damage it.
So, I mean, they can pave around that box?
The last time we moved it out, we moved it maybe five feet because anything behind where it's at is in a flower bed and behind that, it goes up a steep hill.
I'm gonna make a motion, we table that one too until we're kind of super looking at it. If it's already in a. Box, that's.
I do understand why they want to move it though. I mean, you think about it, if it ever was to bust. And we have to go and cut the asphalt, that's expensive repair. When you move it again, it'll be back in the flower bed.
Or will the, will the line be under the asphalt?
Their line will be. There's, there's no way to.
Obviously, Justin moved it maybe five feet.
Are they, is she wanting it back to the flower bed?
She want it back for that bank.
So it can move five, about five feet is as far as we can move it because if we start getting up on that bank, there's going to be erosion and we do not want to be in there. Just. With the bank, it's, I mean, it's pretty steep and.
So you know it's not in that area?
Yeah, it's just.
Or she wants it moved? Do you know where it's gonna be?
I don't know where she wants it moved to. I just know if you move it back five feet, that's about as far as we can move it because anything beyond that is going to be on that bank.
See, I don't even know what we're talking about, so.
We can get some pictures and stuff if y'all want to table it.
Yeah, make a motion to table it until we can see.
I'll say.
Get it visible.
Yeah, I'll write it up on the location. Say, you shall know. So let's table. Did you think of that kind?
I did.
Okay, issues with bill and some of the late fees and cutoffs we've covered down. So just to be clear, anybody kind of question with water bill, you're gonna. You're not getting a late fee, that's correct?
No, I haven't.
Okay, and then it'll be cut off?
Well, if they're behind. Depends on how far they're behind. Now, if it's a crazy water bill, which I corrected all of last month's. Those wild ones are just few and far between. But if they're already behind, I mean, that's what I was asking. The policy was three months in the shut off.
I mean, it wouldn't be far if somebody's screen source way more than they owe and they came forward, I had kept the water off.
It would be that one bill that would be corrected. If they're already way behind and that made the third month, when that was corrected. It looks like they'd still be on the shut off. Would they not?
Well, I mean, the shut offs happened way before this meter change out thing happened. It's just that the shut off list hadn't been, went through and notified them and all that stuff.
We, we, we'll work.
I know we do work with them. I know we've, we've discussed it even in the last meeting, you know, so.
So I mean, you gonna wait to cut off for them or not?
If they're far behind, we can't. I mean, because how, how would that justify the people that pay their water bill every month? If there is a issue with the water leaks, if there's issues with the meters. Putting too much air or water through them, then we will definitely be glad to look at that. And if you call us and say their water's going to be cut off because. Um, a water leak and they ain't paid their bill, then that's something to look at. But if they ain't paid their water bill for months and months and months and then all of a sudden, how can you justify not? Giving them that late fee? But I think that we have worked well with a lot of people.
How can you justify cutting off somebody's water that's being billed for thousands of dollars they don't own?
Well, that's just it. We will dis, we will take that. She has just said it over and over and over again that she takes that off. That's not being billed to them. That's not what we're billing them for. We're billing them for the water that they use. If there is an outlandish water bill.
Just bring it to my attention, her molly's.
You know, they come up here and they discuss it with them. She prints off the sheet. She shows them and then she takes all that off and gives them a pretty accurate reading. And that's what she's going by. And if they want to discuss the late fees and stuff, if they want to come to a meeting, we'll be more than glad to sit down and talk to them.
So you're saying they're gonna pay their late fees and empty subject cutoffs if they received them?
If they are over the three months.
If they're not over the three months, there's no shut off list. And the late fees, if there is an issue with that bill and. You know, they didn't bring it to my attention or Molly's attention and we don't see it, then when we do, or when they do bring it, then we have been taking that late bill that month.
So the late fees have been taken off. For the ones that does have an issue with it, if they want to. Bring it to attention, we'll work with it. Don't care if it.
There's been some very questionable deals like them.
I corrected, me and Molly corrected every one of them.
Next up, we got Joel. I don't know where he's at.
I'm calling a phone call on the way in.
Are you all finished before?
Yeah. I'm gonna go set that up for him.
What's that?
They approved. Sandy.
Is your water up that night?
Never been getting water.
Okay, well, Molly can make the correction.
She can get up with you. I have a meeting and maybe even tomorrow or something.
You got my number?
Is it on your water bill? Should be on there, but go hang up the numbers.
No, they, um, now you got some problems with their bill too. Now you got. I got ten last making, but. Somehow it got canceled.
It's time for me?
Yes.
Okay, let's see. Where can I start? Um, the main reason for me to come this evening is to talk about this, uh, the E D A Economic Development Administration grant application. For the disaster supplemental money. It's a special program that, that they have to help communities that have been affected by disasters. It's, it's, you know, for the hurricane, the lean, obviously, in this region. All the fires out in L A, you know, you've got tornadoes in St. Louis, you've got all kinds of stuff here in the last couple of years that, that, that. Is affecting communities and infrastructure in particular. So this program, there's like two point six billion dollars nationwide and it's, it's competitive across the country. And it's. The, the way you compete for the, for the, the, uh, the project, you have to be in a disaster affected area and even though Graham County and Robbinsville weren't directly affected by the hurricane, you, you have been designated as a county that's eligible for this, this money. So with Echo King coming to town and creating jobs, um, that's what the E D A is, is all about, is, is creating, creating jobs. And so if you can tie. The, the fact that you had it, you were affected by the disaster and you're, you're either, you know, restoring jobs that were lost. Or in your all's case, you have a new industry coming to town that's created jobs. It makes you pretty competitive. And Hillary Sherman, who's the E D A contact in Atlanta for this region, really believes that a project that, that the town of Robbinsville submitted, it would get funded. Um, it's a first come, first served program, so the money's not gonna last forever. Um, it requires a twenty percent match. You have to get up, you can, you can apply for up to twenty million or ten million dollars. Russ Harris and Becca Scott at Southwestern Commission are putting in an application on behalf of the town for, for two million dollars from, from, um, Dogwood Health Trust. And, and they, they, they feel pretty good that that'll be, that'll be funded. So y'all are in a position to make an application. Southwestern Commission will, will, uh. Will prepare the application. Our role in the, in the project would be to put, put a preliminary engineering report together to, to spell out all the improvements that you want to, to do with this potentially ten million dollars. So that's why I'm here tonight. The first thing to do. In order for us to be able to do that, you have to procure us and we, that's, that's that proposal that I sent, Mayor. That, I don't know, three, four weeks ago. So the first thing to do is, is to, to select us to do, to help you with the project. And that requires a, a motion by the board to, to do that. So before I proceed with that, if you all feel comfortable with us helping with this.
And we haven't received any more of the, the.
And that's just the standard statement of qualifications. We're, we're doing a lot, a number of these P E Rs across the, the region, you know, Timby Rock, Marshall, Burnsville. Clyde, Canton, you know, there's, there's a number of, of projects that we're involved with. Irwin, Tennessee is another big one. They're, they're applying for like a hundred million dollars for their wastewater plant.
Oh, so it's just giving you examples of the other towns and stuff too. Okay, I'll see this on the. And it's these what you're. That's what you're proposing for us?
No, no, that's, that's just an example of a project.
Oh, okay, okay.
That, this is the, the general statement of our experience to do a project like this. This is what that is.
So from here, you're saying what that proposing is the? Circle Street, some lime replacements, water storage tank.
Right.
And up there through the water treatment plant, wastewater plant.
Yeah, that's a, that's a proposal to do a preliminary engineering report, which Southwestern Commission is gonna pay for. For us to, to prepare the paperwork to support their application. So that, that's a, that's actually an agreement that the town also has to consider tonight.
Probably all those would be especially in support of the new administration.
Correct, yeah. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk in detail about that here in a minute.
After we, after we make the motion to prove the.
Right, because if you don't want to do it, then you know, there's probably no reason to need it.
Make a motion for the, uh, the deals associates to perform the scope of service for the, uh. Preliminary engineering. Water system improvements.
Okay, so let me, let me jump into the projects and I'm, I'm glad Chad and Lamar here because they have a lot of institutional knowledge. I'm gonna, these maps show a, a number of projects. I'm gonna pass them out. The first one there is, is a, a project that, that we had, had scoped out a while back with, uh. When the Eastern Bandit Cherokee Indians were talking about, um, establishing that language center. And I don't know if they're still gonna do that or not, but that, that project is a, is a project that, that loops Moose Branch. There's a lot of. Water lines that really need to be upgraded along Moose Branch. And it, it also includes a, a, a half a million gallon storage tank above Victory Baptist Church on the high ground. And it would match the, the overall elevation of the four hill tank. And so that, that's a, it's a really strong project to improve pressure. Um, we, we modeled the system. If you had a tank over there in that location, you'd have a hundred and twenty P S I at the bypass where Moose Branch comes in. Um, which, which really helps, helps Echo King's pressure for sure.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, it's like about a five and a half million dollar pro, uh, project all by itself. Which is, you know, a lot of the ten million bucks. Um, so that's one, that's one project. The, the second one that I've given you is the, the one you already know about, the Dilbert Orr wa, uh, rug water line that loops through the, 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 uh. The high school, middle school campus. And of course, a new elementary school is gonna be going over there too. So that has, actually helps the pressure in that area as well. And that, and even though that doesn't directly affect Echo King. It's also a competitive, uh, component of, of a potential project because. You know, the, the school's gonna be bigger and there'll be more teachers hired and, you know, so there, there's, you know, job creation there as well. The others. Waterline projects at least. This is, uh. This is the Atoa Street project and, and coincidentally, we just got approval from the state on, on the, the little leg of Atoa that. We're proposing that you use the rest of that earmark that you got from the state. You're using part of it to do old Sweetwater. And, and this one would be Atoa Street, not all the way, but from the, from the bottom end to, to, uh, this corner here. So the rest of the Circle Street could be done with the ten million dollars. That's a, that's another project. And then finally. This is just a, a, some miscellaneous projects that we've talked about once upon a time. Including old Sweetwater's on here, the East Main Street. I know you've had some issues out here with the, the sinking of the sidewalk and the, and the building that was affected. That could, that could be done. And then I don't have a, there's the two other projects. The wastewater treatment plant needs a lot of modernization. You could spend, you could spend a million dollars more down there, you know, with, with, and Lamar can probably speak to that a little bit more. The SCADA system is shot, the, the filters need rehabilitated. And, uh, there's, there's some other things that, 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 that you could spend this money on. Long Creek Water Treatment Plant, we, we've got a, another proposal that, like y'all will take action on tonight to replace the actuators out there. You've done some of them before, but there's still like, like five actuators that haven't been replaced. And you had a, one, one of the existing valves failed the other day and, and kind of flooded everything out. So it was, it was a bad situation, but that, that investment, there's a proposal that's on your table right now from Perkinsen, who provided the other actuators. For fifty nine thousand dollars and that's actually budgeted in the A R C project. The, uh, the project that's going on with the wells and the meters. So that's the, if you take action on that tonight, that's gonna be paid for a hundred percent anyway. So, but in terms of this ten million dollar project, there, there could be other work at the, the water treatment plant done as well. And then finally, the, the wells, the, you know, Mayor had talked to Echo King about maybe drilling a well on their property. That could, that could certainly be a. Component of the project too. So I'll, I'll stop talking there and just kind of get your all's opinion. I know Lamar and, and Chad probably has some opinions too. Because we, we want to put together a project that is the best help for where you all are. It's really not my call, but I'm just putting, throwing out some options for you.
So this, we just, we don't need to worry about it. It's already took care. We just need to vote to purchase them.
Right.
The fifty nine thousand, the one, the buyout.
The fifty-nine thousand, the one, the value.
Yeah, exactly. If you wanna go ahead and take action on that and get that out of the way.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, I'm gonna make a motion that we accept this invoice from the Perkins Company for the valves for the water treatment plant, or is it the?
It's the water treatment plant.
Water treatment plant.
You just need to authorize us to 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 take the project to bid. And we'll advertise it and, you know, just like Old Sweetwater, we'll, there'll be a contractor to bid on it. I'm, I'm thinking we'll probably, you know, sometime and maybe take bids in late November. We'll pick, we'll pick a date, but if you guys can just authorize us to proceed with the, with the construction bidding for Atoa Street, that's what we need.
We're gonna replace the water line under the sidewalk, correct?
Right.
Yeah, I've been looking at that for years.
But that's, that money's already, you know, budgeted too, so.
Yeah, that was what Carl Gillespie gave me.
Right.
That excites me, I'm just, yeah.
What about the drainage out of the sidewalks and stuff?
So, so and that is a question that I was gonna bring up. Without curbing gutter, you know, with just a sidewalk, the water, we already have water issues in there. So, curbing gutter, I know a few of those people down through there, they have issues with water standing everywhere.
Can that be part of it?
It can be, but we looked at that and it's gonna be so much more expensive and it was more than, more than the money you had available. I mean, we could, we could add that to this project, to me.
So we're kinda just fixing one thing, but making something else.
Well, I think, I think we can replace the water line, you'll still have the drainage issues, that that would be a separate, separate investment.
So maybe you could look at that, Dan?
It's, everything's just so low in there.
It didn't used to pond up like that, though.
And there could be some storm drains that are clogged up too. I mean, I, the, you know, when I walked in, you know, you, there, there's a lot of old, you know, pipes that are probably crushed and, you know, probably been in there, you know, sixty, seventy years.
Yeah, my theory is it's just got to be drained stuff, because I used to live there and it never potted up like it does now.
There is several drains there. My grandpa, Bud, he said that that, when he was younger, went to town, they would go clean those, but he said, you can't find them now. Kind of like it's all riled up or.
So you remember kind of where they were at, or?
At the corner of Bill and C C Carvers, and then went on up towards Miss Danette. But that's as close as you could tell me.
Now, but speaking of drains, Chad, the, um, the water's coming off the Snyder's old store where the museum's at?
Yes.
It's draining into somebody's yard right there. Is there, is there any kind of drain right there, or?
No, the only thing that I know, well, no, there is a storm drain from uh, the top of the hill in this catch box or the side lens, that goes underneath everything down to Miss Davis, I think's her name.
Is there any way we could connect that uh, water coming off those Snyder's store to that?
Or would that be on their property? And I don't, I don't know how that works, and I guess.
Yeah, that's true, I mean, there's have to have a landlord's permission, yeah.
Their gutters, I mean, our storm drain, I don't know how that works.
So storm drains is such a challenge in small towns. I mean, everybody's got them, it's it's old, there's no money to, you know, unless you're a big city like Asheville and you create a stormwater utility that actually, you know, taxes people to, to help pay for improvements, it's just not, it's, it's kinda having, it's like a water super enterprise fund, you almost need a stormwater enterprise fund to be able to help pay for it. And then, you know, short of that, you, you gotta do whatever you can when you, when you do these small projects like Atoa to try to fix the drainage. I mean, it, it could be, I mean, you wanna, you wanna not do Atoa right now and and go back in and maybe, you know, scope something out that would improve the storm drainage in there, so we can add it to it, once we get more money? I mean, that, that's a, that's certainly a possibility. I don't, I don't wanna do a project that, you know, you guys aren't gonna be happy with, because the storm drainage is still bad after it's finished. But we, we, we've replaced the sidewalk, but everything is so low in there that a lot of the, the ponding is still gonna happen.
I do know we need the water on the place, it's terrible.
But we can replace the water line and come back and do the storm drains later.
Yeah, I mean, that's not gonna, either way, it's gonna pond up. I mean, the sidewalk's not gonna help it pond up anymore, is it?
No, no. And you'll have a new sidewalk.
And I mean, there's, there's certain sections that no sidewalk can exist anymore, it's just dirt.
And then, you know, once we get in there and start actually making the improvements, maybe there'll be some obvious, you know, restrictions in the storm drainage that we can fix at that point, you know? We can, I, I think it's, you know, that said, maybe going forward, the project is still, still good for now.
We'll make a motion that we allow deals to advertise for job bids for the Atoa Street project.
I'll see.
Okay. All right, so back to the projects, what do y'all think? And and may, maybe Lamar, you wanna jump in and talk about the wastewater plant?
Well, I can, this uh, we've got the U V system, you know, we, when Chad priced that out, just replace the bulbs and the valves, it's like a hundred and some thousand dollars.
Hundred and eleven.
Something like that, yeah, okay. And the skates system, I don't know what it would cost to replace that, they could be a lot of money spent out of that grant money, all that plant down there, because it's been a lot, it ain't been there that long, but I mean, it costs so much to work on stuff like that anymore, you know? Just the bulbs are like fifty thousand dollars, we gotta replace them once a year, you know? The valves are out, I ain't no part of them. And that's a real important part of the plan.
So that can be added into that?
Yeah, I think, I think, if you're here, Lamar, I, I really think the wastewater treatment plant needs to be part of the project. And we, we can bring, I, I would propose bringing our process engineers down and actually do a, do a day, you know, walk through the plant, just to see exactly what the scope of work needs to be, but that could, that could eat up two million dollars.
And a lot of the V F D motors, some of them's not working, it's just a lot of, lot of stuff, you know, to break down there, that needs upgrading.
So I think, I think you need to do Dillett Ore, we've been talking about that for a while. And the, as far as the Moose Branch project, maybe just looping the line along Moose Branch and not doing the tank right now, which is the biggest part of that project.
I think we need to weight on the.
Weight on the tank, and then just fill in the gaps on more water line improvements.
Was it, was it an issue though, Chad, with not enough pressure on Dillett Ore, or some of the customers?
Yeah, so actually, uh, there was an issue yesterday, Mr. Marino, Justin Marino, they are already starting to see either no water or very, very low pressure, and it's not even got cold weather yet. It's just so many people starting to use it again, and unfortunately, that's because the issues we're having, the line's too long and too small and too many customers on it. So it definitely needs upgraded. I mean, we're not meeting standards on that.
Joe, we'll increase the pressure hold, we have to do. I mean, big, putting a tank up there would, but.
Yeah, I mean, think, just making a larger water line's gonna help the pressure, it may not help it as much as, as the tank would, but it'll, it'll be better. And plus, there's so many undersized lines along Moose Branch, that, that gives you another loop around that end of the system.
How much you think we can increase the pressure?
I don't know, twenty, twenty thir- twenty thirty PSI probably. Didn't model it, but I must say that would burn out Chad at the worst point.
On Dillett Ore?
Yeah. Or, no, I thought you were talking about Moose Branch, you're talking about Dillett Ore.
So, so Dillett Ore, I mean, you're looking at thirty, forty PSI, just really depends on who's using the water at that time. And that's not very good, because we're required twenty, thirty, you know, thirty deer in normal time and twenty deer in peak fire flow. And we're not meeting that.
Yeah, I mean, Dillett Ore's, it's a two inch water line.
Yeah, it's two inch. Eleven thousand, seven hundred feet with forty-seven or fifty-seven customers.
We're talking about looping that big six, it's, it's gonna be a lot better.
There's plenty of pressure where the two inch ties in.
That's just.
Down there to main, that's like, what is it, some PSI down there.
Yeah, yeah, at the twelve each.
You got all those customers on that line, using water at the same time on a two inch, that's the problem.
It needs to be enlarged.
So you, so would you use a larger diameter line, it would crush it that much?
You're only allowed a thousand feet for the two inch line. We way surpassed that, and twenty customers. So I mean, we really need to do that, I mean.
So what do you think about this area right here? This person that came in and they were talking about how they can they turn their water on, it's mud.
Oh, my goodness, that's one of the oldest lines too.
So can we have them add that to the project too? That's in the Milltown area?
So everything from that location all the way down to uh, the nursing home, uh, Brithaven, it's all cast, I mean, it's terrible, I mean.
So what, where, where's that exactly?
So, um, you pass uh, Echo King, and uh, pass Long Creek, right as soon as you cross the bridge, Milltown is up.
Right, that direction.
So from, basically from the end of Milltown there, all the way to uh, I'm assuming like uh, just past Brithaven, it's cast line. Um, I know there was a project done before I started here, uh, maybe fifteen years ago, and it's a supposedly newer line from just beyond Brithaven out towards the unit. So that would, that would help a lot.
Okay, we can, we can look at that, how, how long a line you think that is, a thousand feet?
Oh, well, it's no, it's a lot longer.
A lot longer than that?
Yeah. Um, I can get some, I can lock it out and get some, you know, and everything. Customers, tabs.
I mean, that's a for, for y'all, we, we can add that.
Well, I mean, when you turn your water on and you're paying a water bill and.
Get money wired. Yeah, I, I saw that. All right, so Milltown, that project, Dillett Ore.
Treatment plants.
Um, so anytime we have a leak, I mean, anytime we have a leak, Moose Branch is number one. It's a four inch line, the treble width it is, I mean, it's, it's this deep and some places barely under the pavement, it's touching culverts that cross the road and uh, up towards Monte Branch, it's ten or eleven feet. And anytime we lose water in the clear well, that's where we have to uh, fix it up, and it's not an easy task to fix. And so, before, uh, years ago, um, they made a, a six inch line that crosses the road there at the, on the other end of Moose Branch, they crossed the road with a line for, you know, hoping to better that loop around Moose Branch, they never did it, but there is a valve there that's shut off, that's already crossed the road and slipped. I don't know if that helps, but.
Good, yeah.
Um, it's in bad shape, I mean, I don't know.
So Milltown, Milltown, Dillett Ore, wastewater treatment plant, Moose Branch, um, what about the wells at the, at Echo King? We wanna do that?
Are you thinking that there's enough water out of those wells that will sustain that plant?
Oh, I don't know, until you drill it with them.
There's another way to.
Is it, is it, um, I mean, I guess I hate to take a, a job like that and put it on this and then use the money for it and then it not be.
Well, I mean, that's, that's the change you take with any wells.
Right.
I mean, we, we could've bought the McIntosh property and got dry holes, fortunately we didn't. You know, remember that we were gonna try to do some test wells there before, you know, we, we put it in the project, but it drug on and drug on for so long.
I guess I feel like we've got the water capacity to handle them, if we have the right lines pushing the water through.
Right.
So I don't really know about that, because I ain't really.
I don't know where you would drill one out there on that property.
There's some existing wells out there, Lamar.
Well, it ain't the town's property though, is it?
No, but.
Yes, that was what I was thinking, is is the town gonna take ownership of those wells, or is that uh, Echo King's?
We would, wouldn't we have to if we tied it into anything about it?
Yeah, if you put, if you spent E D A money on it, it'd have to be a town well, that's all it is.
But it'd be okay for us to put it on their land?
Well, you got an easement, or you purchased it or something, you know?
So, uh, I went out there today and helped locate leaks, and uh, Mr. John Le, um, I don't know his name, but he said that those pieces of equipment are gonna take a very big bunch of water to help, I guess, coal and everything, and uh, he's in high hopes of receiving, you know, getting a well out there. Once again, you never know how much it's gonna, you know, produce, but.
Well, if there's two wells out there now, can they not use that as their own cooling water system or something, or?
I think there's only one existing, Lamar, I don't know if it's operational.
So that, so they did say that uh, everything was pulled up, it was pretty much good, we got Everett Brooks out there today, and uh, he went over everything, and he was saying, when he was out there, they never used it, so.
Well, they've already got wells on their drainage system.
Well, we'd have to get the state involved to tie anything into our system, you know, it'd have to be engineered well, well approvals and everything, right, Joel?
Yeah, I, so, not familiar enough with Echo King's um, operations, but is, is they're using thirty-five thousand gallons a day of water, is that, does that need to be potable, or, or can it just be cooling water?
Well, that's what they, it was thirty-some thousand gallons a day when they done their survey, that's how much water that they wanted from the town, and it was so much on the wastewater side as well, you know, to get there, before they purchased the property. It's like thirty-some thousand gallons a day, I'm pretty sure.
Right, so.
Then we could provide, and we can, you know?
I mean, if we can side a well there and, and Echo King, you know, would turn it over to the town, I mean, I, I don't see any downside really to it. I mean, you know, you want, you wanna at least so preliminarily put that in, in the project at the moment?
Roughly, that, what was something like that cost, just a wild rough number, if it's even feasible, you know?
Well, I mean, we, we've drilled the wells up at the McIntosh property, we've, we've spent like sixty thousand hours on it, and we've still got, we got a developing type of water lines in and everything else, it'll probably be, it'll probably be another couple hundred thousand to do that. You know, so it's not, in the overall ten million dollar project, it's not a lot of investment, you know, so it, I don't think it really moves the needle in terms of the affordability.
Right.
I don't, I don't think, you wanna add that to it?
Throw it in?
Yeah, let's throw it in.
What are you gonna do about the contaminated ground and stuff? Do you have to have that tested and stuff?
Well, we got it, yeah, we got it.
So contaminated, you go, what is it?
If it's contaminated ground, that's gonna be a problem.
If there's, I know you can't put any community well, I think it's with a thousand foot of any kind of contamination or a land fecal. And if I ain't mistaken, there was some of that property out there at one time, I, I heard something about it that was contaminated. I think it was, you know, maybe I heard it on the news or something, the paper, I don't remember, but I think it was.
So we have manholes behind the fence, and we bush hog side distance from each manhole with, you have to. So for a very long time, we, they had it fenced off, that you were not allowed in there because it was contaminated, we couldn't bush hog probably, I don't know, pretty good distance, probably from here to the bottom, it's not clear.
I don't know whether they ever looted it or not, I don't know.
I don't know that either.
That's a county question, I think, they've talked about it commissioner meetings since this has all been happening with Echo King, so, yeah.
Before, you know, this'll take a, you know, three days to put this thing together, but you know, we can do some due diligence on whether it's feasible to do that or not.
That would bring, I mean, Echo King is gonna be great for this area, so I mean, I really, I mean, what can I hope, you know, I mean, we're gonna get, we're gonna gain from it, out of it.
Okay, I, I, I think I have enough to at least put something together that makes sense, we'll, we'll get down to the wastewater treatment plant next week and, and scope that out. And then, uh, before we end up finalizing this, we'll, we'll put a whole laundry list of, of projects together with the costs and everything, and come back to you guys.
Yeah.
Does that make sense? We're gonna accelerate getting the McIntosh wells finalized and, and sent to the state so we can tie those in, because I know with Echo Team ramping up and everything, you're gonna need the water. The A R C project with the meters and the wells and the, the actuators down at the wastewater treat, or the water treatment plant, we're still gonna probably have another half a million dollars left over that, that isn't allocated for anything, so that may be something we need to think about in the next month or so. We, we had to get approval from A R C to add something else, and it, and it has to be similar scope, so that, that might be a little tricky, but I don't, once you guys could be sending a half a million dollars back to the government.
We do have some other stuff at the water plant.
And then water plant is the scope, yeah.
That affluent valve and stuff, cabinets and stuff for the electrical. That implement valve and stuff, cabinets and stuff for the electrical components.
We can do all of that.
We really, I got a boat for that too, yeah.
Okay, let's, let's, let's think about that for the ARC, expand out on that.
Okay, but get back to the water, Joe, if he didn't connect to the business system and just used it from non-drinking water, be less stringent?
Be less stringent, but I'd have, we'd have to ask EDA if they, they would pay for that, because it, that, you're, you're suggesting that the, the well would still be owned by Eko King at that point.
No, I mean, it'd be, I'm guessing to the town, so, I mean, I'm just saying, you know, if he's, he didn't wanna use it for.
Oh.
Yeah, just for cooling, it wouldn't be for drinking water.
Would, would you charge him for the water?
Yeah.
So that'd be like, maybe a, a separate rate for cooling water or something? Yeah, probably something like that could work out. I'll, I'll, I'll explore that with the, with the funding agency, see what they say.
We don't want reclaimed water, just, we don't wanna get into all that.
Yeah, if you got enough potable water with what you got, you know, then, then maybe, you know, having that tied into the system isn't, isn't that important? Okay. All right, what else, I think that's about covers it. You'll need to take action on hiring us for this PR, uh, that, that's another hand out there, that's that thirty-five thousand dollars that, that South Russian Commission's gonna pay you. None, none of, I guess none of the actions denied are costing the town any money, it's, it's a good thing.
Make a motion that we hire the McGill's associates for the PR for the town review.
I'll see.
About ten plus, high and four.
It's actually different, it's like Community Foundation of Western art and water, that's paying for that. There's a number of other communities that are using that same money.
Joe, what kind of timeline you got, getting the wells on the McIntosh property?
We need a couple more weeks to finalize the design, then we'll send it to the state, probably looking, looking to put something out to bid, you know, hopefully by the end of the year. And it'll be into the spring, the time yet. That, that'd be the, an aggressive schedule, but I, I know how bored it is, and Lamar's definitely indicated that to me, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna make sure we give, make that a priority to get that done. I mean, that, you know, the.
I mean, I'll be back on three, if we don't get something going on, you know? When they, when they crank up our turn and use another thirty, forty thousand gallons a day.
Yeah.
That is, we'll be around the clock again.
What about the eight-inch ultrasonic meter that we're getting to the meter project for that, for Eko King, is that?
Uh, we've not received it yet.
Okay, we need to, if they're gonna start ramping up, we need to make sure that we, we got an accurate meter.
Oh, yeah.
So that's, I know that's in the works as a change order, but, okay, I'll check on that too.
So they're waiting, uh, for written approval or whatever, as far as the change orders, I'm, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to see quantities for what's been put in the ground so far.
Yeah, exactly, we, we need, you know, that information, of course, yeah, we're, we're adding that eight inches, because the, the old eight inches is no good.
Yeah.
And I know this has been a struggle with the, the meter readings and the hive, you know, monthlies and everything, but I think overall, it's gonna settle out and this is gonna be a much better system. Yeah, I hope so. I mean, you like the meter.
I love it, I, I really think, once we get past this little hiccup, you know, jumping into this, I think it's gonna be great. Because it does, it does help to find leaks and top bursts and stuff like that.
We can save efforts this year.
It'll, 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 once we get everything switched from old to new, it will finally plane out, and it'll be better. But until then, we've still got sixty to sixty-five percent that we're gonna have to do what we've done on the other ones to get there. But that's a small bump compared to what it was, you know, a thousand seventy-six, I think it's been put in the ground, so.
Oh, it was a lot.
Yeah.
Well, not, uh, Milltown were a lot, Chad, where does it run the exactitude, is it tied back into Long Creek, or is it?
It does, so, so the cast line literally comes from Long Creek Water Plant down to, uh, Freeman Gas to the school, and that's a section of the line that's within this, uh, ARC line, that's gonna be the place for the sidewalk. Okay, and then the other section that we were talking about, uh, it comes from, uh, Freeman Gas to, uh, the actuator in the road, from there out to basically, uh, Brett Haven and up Milltown. So, and I don't know what the, how much we can replace there, but up Milltown towards Miss Janet Ward's, all the mud goes that direction and up to, uh, Brett Haven.
What I second, could we tie into the Long Creek line instead of running it back up?
I like the sound of it, but I mean, I'm depending on the funding, I don't know.
Would that be feasible, Joe?
I, I think we just need, Jade and the guys need to come down and get with you and walk the route and see what the, the best configuration is.
And I can, I can walk them through all the old cast line, what we have left and go from there, but I do know that up towards Miss Janet Ward's is bad. It's, and the hydrants up through there, they're so old, we can't touch them.
Well, what I was asking, Chad, if we, if we done that, could we eliminate some of the line coming back from town?
Uh, so there's two lines, there's a ten or twelve, and then there is a six-inch cast. So unless we come from the plant down, I really don't know the answer to that, but we can look at it and, and see.
But I'm understanding, right, it's going back to waiter, dark Freeman Gas, and it comes on, it comes back up the road, goes to Milltown and Brett Haven and?
Yeah, yeah, it feed, it tees at the bottom of, of Long Creek, and it goes towards Milltown and it comes to Freeman Gas.
So is there anything feeding off of it on the way up till it gets to Milltown?
Pretty much everything's off the cast line, no, they didn't tie anything into that other line, there's a handful of people that's off of it. So there is a, a twelve-inch line that comes from the plant, uh, at Long Creek, down Long Creek, um, and I don't know how it ties in towards the band room, so, I mean, it does go the whole way.
Yeah.
But without, I don't know what that does, just as far as pressure, trying to, you know, abandon the one to get, use the other, and I, I don't know how it works.
Yeah, we just have to look at it, you know, but, but I think, I think we gets us out in the field and everything with you looking at it and come up with a solution. And I, I think it's, you know, we can afford to do whatever we need to do down there to make it better with, with this money. Okay, I guess that's all I got.
Appreciate you coming in, Joe.
Well, there's two of those agreements, uh.
I guess I have the original.
Yeah, you signed one.
We got some stuff you need to sign too, please, yeah? No, I'm just kidding.
My signature's not that valuable.
This one just says the height or something.
Yeah, this needs the originals, so if you sign, maybe just sign both of those and give me one back.
All right, well, you're back off here.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry to touch on this paper that you got.
The ones that's for, the other ones, uh, I've heard of it.
If we're going farther, we have a motion to Joe.
We need to go in and close the station. He's got something to write to us. I need something called.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll go ahead and close for.
Well, he's gotta read the thing first, yeah, I'm waiting on Kenneth to read the little, you gotta read your statute there, bro.
Plenipotentiary of North Carolina General Statute, one forty-three dash three eighteen eleven C. I move the town of Brownville Council, Town Council, go into closed session for the purpose of considering personnel matters as defined and allowed by North Carolina General Statute, one forty-three dash three eighteen eleven A six and North Carolina General Statute, one sixty-eight dash one sixty-eight.